We'll stand for the flag of allegiance of America and to the great love of which is banned. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kim Harrison Edwards here, Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Here.
Councilwoman Stephen White.
Here.
Councilwoman Debbie Guff. Curtis. City, interim city manager and finance manager, Joe Sulphur.
Yes.
City attorney Brown Bailey.
Here.
Eve Mike Posey.
Here.
Chief Jimmy Suttle.
There.
Building code zoning enforcement officer Marty Lewis. Public works director Mike Starett. Sanitary director Dee Evans.
Here.
Sanitary board member Stephanie Westfall.
Yeah.
Sanitary board member Alvin Butcher.
With us this evening, we have West Virginia American Water Company, who's going to do a presentation. Thus, the meeting for the joint presence of the sanitary board members and the Weston City Council. We do have a couple of guests in the room. Eric Schardt with Rasher Engineering, and he's also a board member of the Economic Development Authority.
The engineer for them.
Engineer for them. Okay. Trying to get it properly. This is Ray Smith. He's the director of the Lewis County Economic Development Authority. And with the West Virginia American Water Company, we have Jake and Aiden Tate. So I'll let you get started if you want to tell us a little bit more about yourselves or why you're here this evening.
All right. Where should I sit? I don't want to, I don't want to stand and make it look like a lecture.
Your side.
The microphone here because it's for the EDI. I want to make sure that whoever's.
It is.
Because it's for the EDI. I want to make sure that whoever's. Bring it on. Yeah. Mayor.
Yeah.
That's all right.
That's to keep you on point.
Yeah. Just don't feel it at me, buddy.
I can do it.
Okay.
I could do five minutes. It's a nice evening, and I don't want to, and that is absolutely necessary. As mayor, seven names Jake, and some of the direct business development with West Virginia American Water. With Caitlin Lazarga is our project manager. Caitlin is all of the, whenever we look at systems potentially with them, Caitlin are the lead person to work with the, with the city to gather a lot of the documentation. And Caitlin also worked with Ray. Eric Calo. On, on the water line extension projects that we've done in Lewis County, there's been a lot of kudos to him to getting them built. It's, I think, a very fruitful partnership that we really value. As a company, it is, it's a really good one. But I have the company for about. So talk about making some improvements to the system that may have been put off or just they've been. Funding for them. And also maybe to make sure the city get. A little bit money if they were to go down on that road and not much. You get from. Assets that are publicly now that are not taxable, but if they become privately owned taxable. This letter. Uh, this is a, this is a really high level letter that details what the due diligence process looks like. This is something that is a non-binding thing. We do in the normal course of business. The senior patient. We're happy. Set up. Team. Page will sign. In the A. That's something. City wants. Page. Not top C. But things like the, the exact locations pipe is, and we will look at doing is everybody. And to all that information that we've gathered. Uh, there's some financial analysis there. There's some financial modeling uh, done. There's some operations work done to say, uh, this is what we, uh, this is how much it costs the city to run it. This is how much we think it's going to cost us to run it. Putting that into a model and it's, it spits out numbers. Um, also part of that process is kind, is coming up with the value of those assets. Um, so what we'll need from the sanitary board is a list of everything the sanitary board owns. And then putting a value to those assets. The question always is, how much are these things worth? And people think that it's a lot like real estate, and it's not. Um, where these things are located really doesn't have that much of a uh, impact at all. It's the value of the pipes in the ground, the pumps, the plant itself. Um, and then we really just put it into a spreadsheet. It spits out a number and we add those numbers up. And that's what we're able to pay. Um, anything that we agree to uh, as far as purchase price has to be approved by the public service commission. So even if we wanted to pay you fifty million dollars for it, the public service commission wouldn't, wouldn't let us. Um, so because it's may not be worth that. It may be worth more. I don't know. I just threw that number out. So there's, there's that. Um, hey buddy, I didn't even see that dog there. Well, what's, what's boy or girl? Okay. What's his name? Yeah, that's very specific. Not John. Is John Robey, buddy? It's not a tactile. He looks very ferocious. Yeah. Something else that we do for that evaluation, there's the financial analysis. There's the operational analysis. Um, our engineers will come up with a, the, a five-year capital investment plan, which is really a five-year, first five-year look at what we would do to the system uh, as far as improvements go. And those are system improvements that the company uh, would pay for. Maybe some of that stuff is things that the D and her staff already know needs done. Uh, they're in line for that funding and they just haven't got word about it yet. Or the city knows they want to run a line up to this place and they don't have the money for it. Uh, we can build that into the capital plan and, and then. Um, also part of that stage two, we do a lot of work on identifying debt on the system. Um, we'll talk about debt in a minute, and we separate debt into two kind of different camps. You have the actual debt that needs repaid, and that's your loans and your bonds.
Mm-hmm.
That definitely needs to be repaid. Um, there's a lot of that on the system. The other thing we look at is grants. Um, cities and public service districts don't really look at grants at debt. But we do, uh, simply because as a private company, we're not able to get things that were, or own things that were built by taxpayer funding. So we have to pay back whoever gave you that money. So whenever we buy things, they have to be free and clear. We, we, we pay off that debt. That means it's all gone. The sanitary board has no more debt. And we buy those assets and basically whatever's left after that debt is repaid is kept by the city. Um, so if the purchase price is, is thirty and there's twenty-one million dollars of debt, I'm throwing these numbers out, then that means the city would keep nine. So it's kind of like buying your house. You, the bank is paid first, the seller keeps what's left. And, and whatever money is left, uh, that's the city's money that you guys do whatever you want with it. It's like, like I said, the, the guy who says it's your money, use it when you need it. It's kind of like that. There's no, we have no say about what we do with that money. Um, stage three is the offer presentation. Um, and we will come back to the city with a written formal offer to say, uh, the value of the assets is this. We can, for this to purchase them. The debt repayment is this, our, our five-year capital plan is this, this is how many years that we're going to hire. Um, this is the rate impact because we're, um, mod that rate in to make sure there's no shock at the end. Um, the rates aren't horribly low. There won't be a tremendous impact, but there will be rate impact. I'm not here to say that there's not going to be. Um, that's part of the offer presentation. It's all encompassing. Everything that, that we can lay on the table for you to make sure the city council has all the information they need to make this city for the city of Weston. Um, at that point, um, it becomes an issue of sales. Sixty percent vote pass. Um, it's up to the city council alone. Uh, and after that, it's, it's really well to. The way we work is we would give you what's called an asset purchase agreement. That's the contract that you sign. It's like when you buy your uh, soul ordinance that would authorize to sign that. Um, then we file with the public service commission. They have to approve it. It takes a long time, maybe nine months. Um, it's, they're very busy. They, they manage all the water, wastewater, phones, waste management. They, they're chairman of recent, I think. So there's a lot to go through with the public service commission. That's also something we do all. Let's file with the PSC. Um, there's testimony that has to be filed. So mayor, you have to put your hand up and testify, but that's standard procedure. And that's it from a high level. I feel like I've said a lot of words. Um, I know I talk fast. Sometime I made the mistake and had a cup of coffee before. So I will pause there. There, there's more to talk about, but I don't know if there's any, any questions right off the bat. Any, anything from John Robey or anything?
He's our mascot.
That's good.
Council or sanitary board or Ray, Eric, if you have questions.
Of wastewater? Absolutely. Um, there, there is, um, there is a lot of opportunity here. Um, especially knowing our water lines go. To be able to identify places in the county that need wastewater service. And I think, Mary, that's where I think the EDA. Every, every single you use. I forget what the wastewater contribution is. It's like six thousand and something. Great. We get the public funding. And ambition would be whatever hundred times six thousand half million. But that's fine. That we, we do PP.
Um, today he sent us an email about, did we pass the first? First to. Thirty-three piece. And that's if obtained to fix a bit of consideration. First round.
Yeah. Anyway.
So will you be sending us to our counselors who are not in attendance tonight? And I'll say to handle it. I can't. Thank you. Any other questions? Stephen?
Technically, um, the way it works, I don't know that there has to be a vote to authorize the, the due diligence. You're, you're more than welcome to.
Um, but if the sanitary board of the mayor. There's really no reason to, to vote. If this is something the city wants to do, um, we ready to begin work whenever you all say. Just.